Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone, everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask for an approval of the reading of the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
You have somewhere here on your agenda a stock agreement, I believe, in my stipulation order. I guess it's 220132. I was looking at that and I saw that it calls for Tyler to prepare periodic progress reports on its work. When do you anticipate those progress reports to begin?
I can answer.
Speak into the hand.
You got it. I've never been accused of not being loud enough, but so Joan, yes, so we anticipate that those will occur monthly, once Tyler begins the reassessment process. So the stipulation that you're looking at was drafted along with our counsel who's handling the reassessment case, but the specifics in the stipulation come from both the RFP, that went out, as well as Tyler's response.
Right.
So that's where all the specifics, the dates and the follow-ups come from. And that's how we've identified.
Do you anticipate it maybe by the fall that it'll start?
I would think so, you know, but Tyler is here, so they may be able to better answer that for us as far as when that will commence, but my understanding is it should commence relatively quickly and then we'll have at least monthly periodical reports on, you know, where they're at and the progress they've made month to month.
The other thing I would request on behalf of the taxpayers is that can those be posted on the county's website or otherwise made available to the public? Would there be anything, you know, confidential in them that can't be, you know, shared?
Off the top of my head, I haven't seen one yet because they haven't yet been produced. I don't think there would be anything per se confidential. You know, the only, I think, question I would have is, you know, what impact they would have as far as, you know, how far along in the process they are.
Well, that's fine, but I think it'd be good for the taxpayer to see, you know, where the process is going. It's gonna, I mean, I think it was July 2024, you know, which will be the new assessment date and then sometime in 2025, they'll start putting out the paperwork and takes effect January 1st, 2026. And so that's a long way in the future, but I think it's incumbent upon taxpayers to pay attention to this process since it went off the rails last time we tried this.
No, no doubt.
And I'm old enough to remember the last time.
I think, Joan, one of the things that they've been doing, the solicitors have been doing, is to ensure that it does not go off the rails.
Yeah, but I still think that you should have the public, you know, should be able to have some kind of oversight of it because down the road.
We are.
They're paying the bill.
Yeah, no, unequivocally we are and we do have that oversight, as well as there's a fairly, what I'll call, robust educational program and component to this process as well. That'll, that'll kind of be, you know, outlined and laid out over time. So the hope is, of course, and the intent is, to continue to educate the public, to your point, as the process unfolds, you know, what do we say, sunshine being the best form of disinfectant, we want to be as transparent as we can.
And I think you will get a lot of support from the public if they feel that they're part of the process. So I strongly recommend that if you can make these public on your website or even at these bimonthly meetings, you know, put it on the agenda, people can download it, talk about it.
Great idea.
Be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Resolution 220135, approving current payables.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers 340572-341379, inclusive totaling $2,501,039.83. Lackawanna County's electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $11,308,883.56. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220131.
Approving the appraisal services agreement with Tyler Technologies. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the appraisal services agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for real property assessment. Tyler will provide the services for a fee of $5,178,088 and shall commence on the effective date and continue through November 25th, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that as the Tyler Sales Regional Lead, Mr. Paul Miller.
Morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. It's been a long process and we really appreciate that the days come where we can start the work. It's a very important job. As pointed out by a woman from the public, the county's been through something similar before that was a stall and start and we're well aware, she brings up really good, important information, which is transparency, information that we provide to the citizens of Lackawanna County to make sure that they are not, they feel informed, they feel connected. We do things like set up public websites so that they can see pictures of our employees that'll be going door to door, see where we are in the status. I don't know anybody that's ever asked for a status report, but I just checked with Mary and there's nothing on there that would be, we don't handle personnel issues or anything, so that would be something that if you guys wanted to make it public, that'd be fine. We could even put it on the portal. To give you just a brief overview of how the process will go, sign a contract today, we'll ramp up, we'll probably have a kickoff meeting around Memorial Day, the end of this month, the very beginning of the next month. We'll have a skeleton crew come in and start setting up the office with the anticipation of hiring local people for data collection to supplement our staff that we already have to go door to door throughout the entire county. So we're going to go visit every single improved parcel in the county. Now, we only measure the exterior of all the properties. We do not go into the properties, but we do try and make contact with the property owner, whether it's residential or commercial, so that we can announce that we're there, why we're there, ask permission to measure the outside of their home, but also ask information about the inside of the home. If nobody is home, we estimate that information. Later in the project, we do mail each property owner a document that has all the information that we've collected, whether we met with somebody in person and they gave it to us or we had to estimate it from the measurements of the house, a photograph of the house or commercial property and the interior information, no value type information. But this, above and beyond the public website that we'll have set up, is an outreach for transparency. So each person will know the foundation of what we are valuing their property on and if there are any errors, they can reach out and have them corrected at that time. The data collection phase will start probably mid to late summer, where we go to the door to door effort. It's a large part of what we do. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to get the data collected and into the system. The county purchased our software system a couple of years ago, so that's going to really help facilitate this part of it, where we collect the data, put it in the system. The end goal is that taxpayers will receive notices of their new values in probably February of 2025. That'll be the first time they see a value on their property. So in between now and then, all the properties will be visited for data collection, then values, sales will be analyzed and values will be placed on the properties, then all the properties will be looked at as a value review to check those new values against the properties, make sure the property is valued correctly and also equitable among the whole neighborhood, the whole area, so that when we get to the winter, early spring of 2025, we mail notices to taxpayers and they have an opportunity to come in and meet with us one-on-one, not a formal hearing, an informal meeting with Tyler, one-on-one to discuss if they think the property value is incorrect. A lot of people also come in just to learn more, even if the value is correct, they want to sit and talk and ask, what does this mean for my taxes? So at that time, they can sit one-on-one and we make any adjustments that we need to make, errors. There will definitely be errors. You're visiting roughly 102,000 parcels in the county and humans are doing the work, so there will be errors. We have quality control, we have processes in place to minimize those, but our interaction with the public is really crucial to make sure because nobody knows their property better than they do. And the informal process helps us really refine those values. Then July 1st of 2025 is when the assessments will be certified as, I shouldn't say that, they're not certified certified, but those are the formal assessments that will be mailed out. And if people want to challenge the assessment, at that time, they enter the normal appeal process. They go to a county tax board and they appeal through that normal process that they can do every single year. That process runs through October, then the values are certified, like you said, November 25th, the job is pretty much over, and then the first taxation will be done. First time anybody will get a tax bill on the new values will be in 2026, the school and municipal taxes of that year. So that's the quickest overview I can do. It's a lot more complicated and a lot more work, but if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
2008, there was some, it was done. There's a lot of data that was collected. Why can't we update that? Most of it probably has not changed. I've seen some of it, show square footage, rooms, what the house is heated with, stuff like that. That, wouldn't that make sense to utilize some of that information that's already been collected?
Yes, any information that you have will be a starting point and it will facilitate the job going easier. If the, even if the information is correct or incorrect, having it and correcting it is easier than if we had just a blank piece of paper. And we took that into consideration when we put our price in, that we would have that information as a starting point, which would make it easier. In other words, if you said, we have no information, you're going to go out with a blank sheet of paper, the price would have had to have been higher because it does facilitate it.
My only, I only have one question, well, I have two actually. There's a lot of scanning that has to be done in the assessments, the assessor's office. I was talking to the new director, Pat Tobin. He had showed me that there were a ton of filing cabinets. Is that going to be done by Tyler? That's part of the process for you?
Yep, that's part of the process. It was something like, if I remember correctly, an estimated 520,000 pieces of paper.
There's like 25 skinny cabinets.
Yeah.
And so, so that will be done.
That'll be part of it. We have to work out with the county the exact details. You have a vendor that you currently use somewhere else in the courthouse that reached out to us since we were awarded. They read it in the paper and they reached out and said, hey, we work with the county if you need our help or whether we'll have our own employees do it, but we'll work with the county, you know, what the rules are as far as taking it off-site, we're having to do it onsite, things like that.
And then my next question, which I don't know if you could answer today, but something that I'd like an answer to at some point in the future is, Commissioner Naterianik, you know, pointed out that other states, not Pennsylvania, have, they compel their counties to reassess, and I don't know if this is true, I'm just hoping that he was right, that they compel their counties to reassess every so often?
Cyclical reassessments, that's correct.
Yes. Pennsylvania apparently doesn't.
No.
So what, in my mind, this is the first reassessment in 54 years. I think it's like a huge accomplishment of this administration that we're doing this. But moving forward, we don't know how the result is going to be and, you know, even now, we have some people who are for reassessments, some people who aren't. So whether or not moving forward, reassessments on a consistent basis, whether or not that will be moved, implemented by future administrations is something that I, I don't know why, but it's stuck in my head. So my question is, will you be able to, either now or once you get into the process, be able to tell us, you know, how often we should, if we were to pass an ordinance, how often we should compel future administrations in this county to do reassessment, say every five years, seven years, 10 years, taking into consideration, of course, the cost? I mean, I know the cost this time, in light of the 54-year span, is a lot higher than it would be if we did it on a more consistent basis. So I was just wondering, is that something that you'd be able to speak to now or once you get into it?
I can speak to it a little bit now. So the cyclical reassessments, if you get 10 appraisers in a room, their opinions will vary, how often you have to do it. In Florida, they do something every year. My personal opinion, and I've been doing it a long time, I feel six years is a good number. The state of Delaware just did, all three counties lost the lawsuit and they're doing, one of them, the latest was 1974, so they're in the same situation. So they've already proposed legislation to go every five years. So the-
Is your, is your opinion based upon like the size of Lackawanna or like depending on the size of each county, does your opinion vary?
No, it's more like, it's more like, how do you get the most bang for your buck while also maintaining equity? The further away from, the further time between reassessments, the more inequities that occur. It just happens. So every year is the best. You'd have the most equitable, but it would cost you money.
Right.
So where is that balancing point? Some people say three years, some people say four, Delaware thinks five, I say six. I say in, in, that's just my opinion.
What's your basis for that?
That you, that if you do it every four years, you'll have more equitable, but it'll cost you a reassessment every four years instead of every six years. It just saves-
You think six years would be adequate?
Yeah, I think so. But some people may even say 10 years, but I think most people would agree between four and six is what people would recommend. And as far as cost goes, we compete, I don't personally, but my coworkers compete in cyclical markets like Ohio, Indiana, and I think we sell work at about $18, $20 a parcel versus this was near 50, to give you a relativity. So the price comes way down. Also, I mean, you had two companies to choose from. If you, if Pennsylvania enacted a cycle, not just Lackawanna County, but if all Pennsylvania enacted a cycle, there'd probably be four, five or six companies that would show up. Different, you know, some of them wouldn't make it because they would do poor work, but, but that competition would drive the price down and you would have more choices county. So there's benefits to cycles.
So you, this job, well, you said will be over in November of 2025 and then the new tax bills will be issued in 2026. So you would do the six years from the end of, from 2025 and do it then in 30?
Yeah, so the next one, we would finish in 2031, if we won the work.
Do the, do the next one in 2031, start the next one in 2031.
Well, it depends. There's different ways to approach. Some people have a vendor work consistently throughout. For instance, your assessment office has had trouble hiring people.
I think we're good on that now.
You're good now, yeah.
I think we are, yes.
So in Indiana, a lot of them just have us do their new construction in between. They have a chief assessor and they have some staff, but they have our people doing some of the work in between. So it's never really a start and stop, it's a, it's a continuous thing. That's just some of the counties, but-
So you would kind of do some of the work that's required the entire time? You wouldn't just go away for six years and then, and at the six-year mark, you'd be ready to do the reassessment again?
Right, right. And then everything's smoother, the public's more informed, they're more used to it, they're, you know, it's part of the pro, it take, I've never lived through it, the implementation of a cycle. I look forward to it, hopefully in Delaware. They've talked about it at county commissioners' meetings for years in Pennsylvania, if it ever is enacted, but I would imagine it will take a couple cycles for the public to really get used to, oh, here's my new assessment.
But it's considerably less expensive.
Yeah, tremendously, less than half.
And the longer you wait, the more-
Expensive.
Correct.
The more expensive it is because the more consistent-
Who owns the data?
You guys do. You guys do. You're paying for everything and it's all yours.
And I, and I think the most telling sign to the point of cost is when you look at it per parcel.
Right.
If the estimate is about $50 per parcel now because of the timeframe, and that can be reduced to 15 or 20 or $25 per parcel, I mean, that's cutting the cost down less than half.
Right, right. And that's just saying what happens in other states. What I would picture in Pennsylvania, if, if the county itself did it, I'm not sure how it would play out cost-wise and all, but if the whole state did it at once, you can just imagine, it's a new industry, people don't-
As Paul said, if we, there'd be much more competition.
Yep, that's what-
Pennsylvania, there's only two vendors that actually do this work.
That's it.
Other states are six and seven and, I mean-
It's very difficult to, we're a national company, so we can work in Delaware until Lackawanna signs and then we can move people. People that just would work in Pennsylvania, that'd be very difficult to make a living doing that unless there was a cycle. But once you introduce a cycle, all that changes. Now it works predictable, you, you know, there's 67 counties, people are fighting to get which three or four or six or seven or 10 they can keep going and, and it's all, you know, it's like anything and when there's competition, you benefit.
Yep.
My last question, since I have you in front of me. So you indicated that if we were to decide to do this every six years, you indicated that there's a couple of ways you can go about it and one of the ways would be to have like our director of the assessor's office work with, with Tyler if-
In, I wasn't promoting that, I was just saying in Indiana, some of the counties found that easier where we do their new construction for them, which would just mean, you have a field staff that go out to, people get permits, people build new houses, houses burn down, they go out and they correct the assessment role. In some cyclical states, they find it better, they have their normal office, but they supplement their staff with a couple of our data collectors. And then when it is time to, for that sixth year, they're more prepared for it to go. It's not as heavy of a lift.
So we would like have a vendor work in conjunction with our assessor's office?
It's one of the options. It's nothing I promote because, you know, it's, it really is just up to you guys.
Well, the alternative would be to do it in-house, is what you're saying, right?
Well, to continue working the way you do now and then every six years have us come in and do the work.
Is one more, is one more cost-effective than the other?
I don't think so. There's so many dynamics that play into it, I really don't know.
Okay.
It's how much you pay your people, how much retirement you're saving by not having, you know, all those things.
Okay.
We, we don't currently do that anywhere in Pennsylvania.
Thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to-
Thank you again.
Approve 220131.
I will make that motion.
Second, on the question.
I'm going to be a no. I'm still very concerned about our elderly on fixed incomes, you know, we're still in a pandemic, gas prices are out of control, food prices are out of control, electric's going up, gas is going up, you got people worried they're going to lose their houses, it's been 50-some years. I, I think this is just poor timing, I've said it before, I'm a no.
Okay, well, on the question, all in favor?
Can I just make a quick statement?
Sure you can.
Okay, I'm going to be a yes and here's, I always have shared since the very beginning, if you even look back to our debate on this issue when I ran for commissioner, that before I knew as much as I do now about reassessment and the need for it, my concern was always the same thing, not just the elderly, but people who are on a fixed income. I, I do think though, there comes a point in time where, when is a good time? 54 years, I think, you know, we have to do what's best for the county as a whole and then if there is a small fraction or a fraction of individuals in our county who are going to be negatively affected, which I am concerned about as well as Commissioner Schirmer just expressed, then we have to find a solution for that problem. But denying something or denying a process that is good for the community as a whole under the guise that it may affect some people negatively without taking steps to try to find a solution for that is just not good government, in my opinion. So to that end, I have been working with, so the Tax Claim Bureau, they have a, an elderly deferral program for delinquent taxes and that's limited to 65 and older and I think annual household income of $35,000 or something. Ours is different because it won't be for delinquent taxes, it'll be for any reassessed, reassessed values that maybe, you know, say somebody was paying $2,000 a year and it goes up a certain percentage and they're living paycheck to paycheck and it would cause a financial burden. How do we help them? So I have been working with Pat Tobin, the director of assessors, Bridget Carrie, who is a wealth of information, who is the solicitor of the assessment office, and also Barb Linity. And we, Barb Linity, with her program, she, she works with Neighborhoods. Is it Neighborhoods or Neighborhood Works? It's Neighborhoods, right? And I talked to Jesse Ignat and talked to him and asked him if he would help us in this process like they are helping, like they help Barb Linity's Tax Claim Bureau with their process of determining whether people are eligible for a program. So we are in the process of developing a program. We have a lot of the eligibility requirements nailed down. We are going to limit it in, in scope, meaning that you can't have this, you can become eligible for a program, but there'll be a cap on it, say one year or two years, so that people who are negatively affected by this, if any, they have a time to, you know, reassess their budget and try to figure out a way to make it work so that they're, they don't feel like their backs against the wall. It'll be, you know, there'll have to be a certain percentage of an increase in their taxes, there'll have to be a certain amount of, there'll have to be a threshold in terms of household income, which we haven't set yet. And so my point being is that this is what we need to do, even though it's scary for some people, but there is work being done in the interim and hopefully we'll have something by the end of the year that we can put forward, definitely if not the end of the year, the beginning of next year, because we are very close to getting to nailing down our eligibility requirements. So there will be a program that does offer some relief. I, I don't believe that we should limit it just to the elderly, 65 and older, because there are people who own houses, who don't, you know, they're, they're not making, they're not wealthy people, but they're, they're making it work because most rent around here is more expensive than some mortgages. So we don't want anyone to lose their home. So we're going to do it based upon income, household income, based upon the percentage of what, you know, that their taxes increased, make sure, you know, in order to be eligible, they're going to have to have all their taxes paid, they can't have delinquent taxes, they're going to have to, you know, have this property as their primary residence, things of that nature. So I just want to put the public at ease in the sense that, yes, we are doing something today that I think is an awesome thing and we should celebrate it that we're finally doing it, but for the people that are afraid of how it's going to turn out, I am working with others who know more about this than, than me in terms of the logistics of it and we are going to have some sort of safety measure for, for, for people who may be adversely affected. So just for everybody, just bear with us and I really do think this is what's going to be best for the county.
It's all good, that's all good stuff. I just think that should be put in place first. You know, I love the saying, you know, that the statement everybody loves to hear is, we're from, we're from the government and we're here to help. So that's, you know, this is what I'm looking at. I think we're going to hurt a lot of people, these things should be put in place before we make the decision.
Well, we've had three meetings or two. Shannon, how many have we had, two or three? Uh, two or three meetings. You know, we, we, I would have liked to do that too, but unfortunately, we're set to go to trial in June. And then that opens a whole can of worms in terms of litigation and paying attorney's fees and things of that nature.
And again, it's been, since, it's 54 years.
Yeah.
And it won't go into effect until 2026.
And we have to be-
Which is another four years.
And we have to be very clear on the, the requirements of this program. We have to make sure that it's not going to open a floodgate, but we have to make sure that the right individuals who are really truly adversely affected, if any, do have a right, do have a safety net. So it's not something we want to just throw together and hurry up and get done before today. I would have liked to get it done, but unfortunately, litigation is scheduled for June. I can tell you, I represent to the community that we are in the process of getting it done and I hope by the end of the year that we will have something drafted and before this board for, for, even- and before this board for, for, even though it's not gonna take effect for four years like he stated, I'm hoping that will be in effect or before the Board of Commissioners to vote on long time before that.
I'd like to see the safety net in place before I jump out the window.
Again, it's 54 years. Part of the reason for that is intestinal fortitude, political. They have avoided doing it because of fear for their own well-being. This is the right thing to do at the right time, necessary, and just, on that note, we've had the questions, the motion's on, you made a motion, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Resolution 220128.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging's Professional Service Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Fiscal Year 2223 Area Agency on Aging Professional Service Agreements with the Outreach Center for Community Resources and the Health and Wellness Senior Activities Program. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Hey, Jason.
Good morning, everyone. The First Amendment is for a support group that we have for grandparents who are raising grandchildren, and that is called Past Parents a Second Time. This support group helps those individuals that fall between the cracks, that end up taking in their grandchildren or loved ones and raising them at a point in their life that they weren't necessarily prepared to have younger children living with them again. It's grown, it's been working, we've been working this program for five years, and it's grown to the point where we've decided to work with Outreach to expand it and offer more availability. Outreach is a fantastic organization within our community, and we think they can take this program to the next level. The Second Amendment is for another program we're going to offer at our senior centers, and it's for Calligraphy. It's just an expansion of services that the older adults have requested at our centers.
Anyone have any questions for Jason? Entertainer, a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 220129.
Approving an Area Agency on Aging Amendment. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Area Agency on Aging's Professional Services Amendment with the Jewish Community Center for Senior Activities. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Kavulich.
Memory cafes are not new in the community. The JCC has put them on traditionally, and done a very good job with that. We've decided this year to fund the program with the hope of expanding it beyond just the JCC center. So, we'll pilot the first round at the JCCs and then take that out into the other parts of the community, hopefully, as things open up and we can expand.
As usual, Jason, you have done a great job. Anyone have any questions? Entertainer, a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 220123.
Accepting a quote from Johnson Controls. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby accepted a quote from Johnson Controls to install card access devices in the Bricks Building for the Adult Probation Department at a cost of $29,400. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our IT Director, Mr. Michael Brown.
Well, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This will provide adequate safety and also help reduce costs for the county by actually having badge access to the building, like all of our other county buildings, which means that the sheriffs don't necessarily need to be there off-hours when security or maintenance work has to be done within the building, when the IT department needs to get in there, and also, in the event of an issue that happens, we can, they can hit a panic button that will release all the doors, so this way, we can evacuate everyone safely and soundly.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Michael?
No, that I understood. Usually, when he starts talking, I get very confused.
Entertainer, a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 220133.
Approving the ServiceNow quote. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the quote from ServiceNow Karasov Technology Corporation for the Workflow Project for County Departments. Year one cost to be $223,485.60. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here once again to explain this is Director Mike Brown.
Now for the confusing part. So, workflow management is something that is near and dear to me. So, there's a lot of business practices that we currently have within the county that could use some overhaul, that we tend to do manual things, and certain things get slipped through the cracks. So, with a workflow process, we can actually automate certain tasks that this way keeps everyone on point with what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, and we can all be held accountable. But one of the reasons why this is being brought up now is that this will actually help improve the process works with the Department of Health and Human Services. Unfortunately, the Executive Director isn't here right now to speak on that part, but we feel that this, this tool will actually help smooth and streamline some of the process within this department, and then, as it's piloted there, we're going to move it through all the departments within the county to actually help reduce costs and services, because we won't have people duplicating work.
So, can you just give me an example, as you said, for some tasks that they don't slip through the cracks? Like, can you give us an example?
Okay. One, in, one area that actually impacts the county is onboarding and offboarding individuals. Whether an individual is coming on board from a elected bureau, like Register of Wills or Recorder of Deeds, sometimes individuals get hired, and HR may get the information, the sheriff's department may not get that information. IT is normally the last to know. Normally, they're actually here the day of, and people are requesting services. That should all be in an onboarding process. So, this way, all the checks and balances are done, security checks are done, sheriffs know this already, IT knows already. We can prepare items, so this way, when people come here to work, they can work day one.
So, you're not, your back's not against the wall with trying to get them set up with IT and their computer, and you, I get it, okay?
Yes.
I just wanted to-
Right. When approval for hire is signed by the Commissioners, it goes down to HR. When they put in their computer, this will push out to all the departments that need to be, well, it'll push out to all the departments, but those individual departments that need to get on board with this individual for their background checks, for their security clearances, for their-
Right.
Computers, whatever.
And as well with offboarding, because sometimes people leave unexpectedly.
That's more of an important situation.
And then, you have to cut off security for-
You gotta cut the badges off, you gotta collect the keys, that kind of stuff, and you have individuals that still have that paraphernalia with them.
What, how, I don't know how to ask this question. How are you gonna come up with a list, like, are you gonna have?
Well, we currently have inventory-
There's probably several things throughout the county.
Yes.
A lot of things that we're not even thinking about right now.
Correct, and that's where we're gonna be working with each department to come up with the workflows for every situation as we can think of, and start to implement them.
So, each, like, each director or row officer or whatnot is gonna work with your department?
Yes, and also, this will work with coming up with a business continuity and disaster recovery plan as well. This is something that we've been working on for a while, but never fully actually had it flushed out.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Accepting Resolution 220134.
Accepting the quote from CDW Government. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the quote from CDW Government for the Lackawanna County Remote Worker in Law Enforcement Refresh in the amount of $502,755. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Finally, one last time here is Director Brown.
Okay, this one should be easy. So, as we're finalizing the rest of the upgrades for the departments that actually have individuals that could have worked remotely, but we also need to improve our infrastructure with the new security measures that we're putting in place. So, as we're upgrading cameras, as, which will be posted on another agenda item, we need to increase our infrastructure machines. So, the sheriff's departments will be getting upgraded devices, such as also the handle with the new billings, so, single tax office would be impacted as well as other departments that we did not touch during the first initial go-around. So, this will complete the process for all the other machines needing to be updated for the county, so everyone can actually work efficiently.
Do anyone have any questions for Mike? Entertainer, a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Resolution 220131.
Approving a memorandum of agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the memorandum of agreement with Lackawanna County Detectives Association Successor Agreement to commence on January 1, 2022, and expire on December 31, 2026. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our acting HR Director, Ms. Joanne Decker.
Good morning. This is just to approve the Detectives Association Collective Bargain Agreement. As Brian said, it'll go retro to January 1, 2022, and it will expire December 31, 2026.
How'd the county make out?
Good.
How do we make it?
Okay. Good, yeah. Minimal, you know, fair wages, a small increase to the uniform allowance, no change to longevity, some small increases to healthcare.
It was a good balance.
This was the one that you and I spoke about, right?
Both sides are very happy.
Yeah, this was very-
Very reasonable.
Very, very reasonable.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Thanks.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 220136.
Approving an amendment to VigilNet. VigilNet. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the amendment to VigilNet for the Adult Probation Department to commence on May 1, 2022. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Court Administrator, Mr. Frank Castellano.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the Adult Probation Department, the department and the court received this proposed amendment from the VigilNet Corporation. And as you know, VigilNet is the corporation which provides the ankle bracelets for the alcohol monitoring and the house arrest for the defendants under the supervision of adult probation, who are in need of that level of supervision. This amendment contains two specific issues. Number one, an increase from $11 per day to $12 per day for the supervision fee. Now, that's a client pay increase of $1. And of course, that supervision fee is for the benefit of the equipment, the reports of compliance or non-compliance to the Adult Probation Department, as well as the maintenance of the equipment. And then, item number two, VigilNet is looking to terminate the revenue sharing fee. Currently, the contract that's in place has the sharing fee of 7%, which means 7% of the total payment received from the participants goes back to the county. The original reason for that sharing fee was because historically, Lackawanna County, through its Court Collections Department, assisted VigilNet in collecting fees for those defendants who absconded or those defendants who had warrants placed against them. That process no longer is in place where the county is not assisting with that collection. That is being done entirely by the VigilNet Corporation. So, because we're no longer assisting with that, you know, we think it's reasonable that that sharing fee be removed. So, those are the two items, those are the reasons behind it. The court has no objection to it, the Adult Probation Department has no objection to it, so I respectfully request that it pass.
I have two questions. I'm a little concerned about, I know it's only a dollar, but a dollar a day, it's already hard for the indigent to pay sometimes for the sanction. So, what is the basis for them increasing it? I mean, $12 a day may not seem a lot, but when you're, you're deemed indigent in order to get an attorney through the public defender's office, and they have a very low threshold to becoming eligible for those services, and then, on top of it, the SCRAM is now going up. It's, I don't think it's very fair to them. And then, secondly, I don't know why we would give up our full 7%. It's, I know what you're saying behind it, but like, I'm thinking of the contract we have with, at the prison with GTL and other vendors. We don't necessarily do any of the monitoring or things of that nature, but because we gave them the business, and they're making money, the county gets a percentage back. So, I don't know why, you know, they're getting the benefit of us having this contract with them, and we're just giving up our 7%. I don't know, I don't know why that is a good idea.
Commissioner, to that, to that point first, right now, there are approximately 24 clients, 24 defendants who are on the program. Again, when the contract was originally entered by the county and the VigilNet Corporation, and I'm only here on behalf of the Adult Probation Department, obviously, because it's a program-
I don't mean in court, you said 24 people, you mean on SCRAM?
Right now, yes, on this, on this program.
That could be, is it lower because, you know, we were, because of the pandemic, we were kind of taking a different approach to?
Well, there are, as you know, there are various levels of supervision.
Yeah.
Various levels of ways that defendants such as these can be monitored. And obviously, the court only orders this level of supervision when it's necessary, based on the charges and based on the case.
Right.
And I'm sure that there are various reasons why that number may be higher some years and maybe lower some years, but as of last week, when I was putting together the information in preparation for this meeting, that was the number that I was provided by the VigilNet Corporation, that they're currently at 24. But in terms of the 7%, again, you know, I'm here on behalf of-
No, I understand, I don't mean to shoot the messenger.
No, 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 that's perfectly all right, but I can simply explain to you the reality, and the reality is, is that the county and our Court Collections Department, you know, no longer is involved in the process of attempting-
They're still getting our business. So, we're giving them not only a dollar more a day, but then, we're taking off the seven and a half, we're giving them the, our percentage back.
Well, they're requesting that the percentage be returned because the work that was outlined in the original contract is no longer being performed.
Right. Can an amendment be done where maybe we get a reduced percentage, but in light of the fact that I'm sure that there are other companies out there who do this work, and the fact that we-
So, Commissioner, you know, I would have to leave that to the county. Again, I don't represent VigilNet, I want to be very clear about this.
No, no, I understand.
I'm here because it was sent by them to the Adult Probation Department, which obviously is a, is a department of the court. So, on behalf of that court department, you know, I'm presenting this and sharing this with you. Again, I mean, for what it's worth, you know, we don't feel as though it's unreasonable because that particular work is no longer being done.
Right, but I'm saying, like, with other vendor contracts, we don't actually, I understand what you're saying, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, for giving them the work, still be given a percentage of it like we do with other vendor contracts. So, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna make a motion to table it, just because I'm not, the $1 increase plus no money coming to the county, I'm not happy with that, and it concerns me with the indigent. So, I'm gonna make a motion to table it, I don't know if anyone will-
I'll second it.
And just give us time, we'll address it hopefully at the next meeting.
So, what I would suggest then is that county legal counsel, you know, work with the VigilNet Corporation.
Okay.
Because, again, this contract is between Lackawanna County and the VigilNet Corporation, and I'm only here on behalf of the Adult Probation Department of the court.
I understand.
You know, we do not negotiate contracts, and we don't represent. So, I, you know, respectfully would turn it over to Attorney Ruggiero.
Okay. And I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
No, no, I understand.
You're just the messenger, I understand.
Just want to be clear about that.
Yeah.
And if I may, Madam Commissioner, so, Attorney Castellano, I don't have any problem, obviously, working with VigilNet and negotiating new terms. My understanding was, the negotiated terms were agreed upon between the courts, particularly, I think, Judge Berace's office, who primarily was handling the contract and VigilNet. So, I don't want to step on anyone's toes either. So, I'm happy to do the negotiation, and to Commissioner Dominic's point, we'll negotiate it. But I want to make sure that we're on the same page, that if we're negotiating, then we'll negotiate. Of course, we'll communicate with the courts and do that, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page, so that the left hand knows what the right hand's doing.
Keep us informed.
Oh, we certainly will.
Thank you.
Frank, this says it's-
And likewise, if there's anything from the court's side relative to the contract or discussions, we should be kept informed as well.
Well, as I said, we had no objection to it based on the way it was presented, but you're the party to the contract, so.
You got it.
Well, that was, it says Vigilant America, LCC, and Lackawanna County Adult Probation. So, it doesn't say Lackawanna County, and the probation falls under the court system. So, I don't want to step on anyone's toes either. I just, eliminating that share, revenue of sharing fee completely, just, I don't know. sharing fee completely, just, I don't know, it doesn't sit well with me.
Well, and I respect that, Commissioner, but as you know, you know, the court doesn't enter into the contracts. I mean, under the Home Rule Charter, it's the county that does it on our behalf.
Is this going to delay anything or cause any inconvenience if we just table it until the next meeting?
You know.
To your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to table it.
Thank you.
A second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I was okay with the presentation at the work session, so I'm fine with approving it, but, so, I guess I'm a no.
Resolution 220137.
Authorizing the filing of a RAC grant application, authorizing
Thank you. Authorizing the filing of redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency Phase One. Whereas, the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency Prekindergarten Project entails the acquisition, construction, and renovations to an existing building to serve between 120 and 160 low-income children and families with the Prekindergarten Center of Excellence in Scranton, Pennsylvania. Whereas, the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital program funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency has proposed that the county assist the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency in obtaining and accepting funding from the Commonwealth Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for Phase One of the project. And whereas, the county desires to assist the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency in obtaining the funding from the Commonwealth Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for Phase One of the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file and accept an application now awarded in the amount of $500,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of the Lackawanna County Human Development Agency for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 18, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution is authorizing the filing and acceptance of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency in the amount of $500,000 for their pre-K project. Anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Brenda, before you go, so, just to recap on the weekend, you guys did a phenomenal job putting together, with the economic development and Brenda's leadership, we had Give Back on the Mountain, which I think was a tremendous success. I know I enjoyed the time I was there, saw a lot of smiling faces. So, I think it was a great job, and it was a lot of fun. So, hopefully, we could do it again.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. And one of the things that you mentioned, the smiling faces, seeing families out and people and the businesses, I think, and the artists that were performing, it was just a great way to really give back. And so, I thank you all for supporting us, and I think everyone was happy with the event.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion, 220132. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you. What is it?
Motion to approve stipulation order.
What's the stipulation order? I don't even have it.
Stipulation for the reassessment.
Oh, okay, I don't have.
I don't have it either.
You made this motion, so I must decide.
I know, I'm just saying, I have two things with motion, but I don't have the actual stipulation.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Okay. Can I know what, let me, is this, this is just a motion to stipulate for reassessment? Is that what you're saying? Okay, all right. I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Other question?
Mr. Ruggiero.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, this is a stipulation emanating out of the Scotch versus Lackawanna County Board of Assessment Appeals, what we often refer to as the reassessment matter. This stipulation encompasses the terms and conditions of both the RFP as well as Tyler's response, and the purpose of this stipulation is essentially to hold the ongoing matter reassessment case in abeyance pending the reassessment. The reassessment matter is currently set for trial the second week of June, and rather than going through that trial and expending the time and costs associated with that, it would be a fruitless act relative to the reassessment, since the Commissioners have already made the decision to enter into the contract with Tyler. This preserves everyone's defenses. It preserves the county's defenses. It preserves the plaintiff's defenses, and if, for some reason, the reassessment does not come to fruition or does not conclude, then each party would have the ability and the right to appear back before the court at some future time to resolve their differences.
So, it's just, by stipulating, we give the plaintiffs the comfort of not having to withdraw and to make sure that we follow through.
Yeah, that's correct.
Kind of just puts a hold on the lawsuit.
That's correct, so that the lawsuit would simply remain in abeyance, stay in its present state, and allow the county the time to go through and complete the reassessment.
I was under the impression this was already done with the agreement between the parties. I didn't realize we had.
Yeah, that's where I got jammed up. Okay.
It is done. The parties do agree to it. This is just the county's now formal concurrence of the stipulation, and then the plaintiffs will execute it as well.
Okay, so this doesn't go, if the reassessment doesn't happen, this doesn't go away?
This does not go away, and each side preserves their rights and defenses to move forward in whatever manner they deem appropriate.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you make a motion?
Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opportunity for public to address the board.
Joan Hodawanis. One more time on reassessment. I don't own property in the county anymore. I rent in downtown Scranton. Charlie Jefferson is my landlord, and people have made the comment to me that reassessment doesn't affect me. Well, they're wrong. Reassessment affects everybody in Lackawanna County who rents, because every landlord worth his or her weight factors in property taxes when they charge rent.
Correct.
So, everybody in Lackawanna County, whether you own property or you pay rent, you should pay attention to reassessment, because it does affect you. Don't have a false sense of security. You already see rent going up because of inflation. Well, this will be just one more factor. It will affect you. The other thing is, Commissioner Chirmac is very right when he points out the need for safety nets for various categories of people, the poor, the elderly, the disabled. There are many categories which may need help. Now, you already have many programs in place. Example is LIEHEAP for people who need assistance with heat. But I think that even though the first tax bill won't come out until 2026, I think you, as Commissioners, need to be proactive in ensuring that appropriate safety nets and programs are in place long before then. And then, you must make sure that people know about these programs and how to access them. And, you know, I mean, your imagination is all that you need, how you're going to advertise such things. You know, you've got TV, radio, mailings, social media, all kinds of ways to spread the word. But this is why you get paid those big bucks, because it's your fiduciary responsibility to make sure that there are safety nets in existence, and that they are well advertised, and people have access to them. There is a lot of panic in the county still about the subject of reassessment. Some of it justified, some of it not. But now that you have decided to enact this legislation, the ball is in your court. And that's one of the reasons why I was asking about, you know, making the progress of reassessment public, because we need to be watching you. It's not that we don't trust you, it's that we don't trust you. You know, I mean, it's called, you know, arms-length observance. You know, there's no watchdog, like the watchdog that's paying the tax bill, or the rent. So, I'm telling people, you know, follow this issue, follow it closely, because it's now been enacted, and we're all going to feel its impact. Thank you.
Hopefully, Joan, the impact will be a positive one, not a negative one. And we are already in the process of putting the safeguards in place, and we have time to do that, and we will have it completed, and it will be made public, and we'll work very hard at that.
And I wanted to
The question will keep you on.
I wanted to do it as soon as possible as well, because I think if the public, the sooner they know that there's a safeguard there, it may put them at ease. But we have to figure out the percentage of the tax increase that we're going to make, you know, one of the eligibility requirements. And we also have to, because I don't want to limit to 65 and older, because there are, you know, other people that would be affected, we have to try to make sure that we have the right amount. At first, I thought, well, let's just do it in line with the program for the tax claim bureau has for delinquent taxes, but I don't want to just rush to judgment. So, we are, I'm hoping we have it done by the end of the year, but you're right, I think that it will definitely put people's minds at ease. We also want to make the eligibility requirements very easy to read, in other words, not written like a lawyer would write, so that
Multi-ligual. You mean Spanish and
Right. But also, you know, sometimes lawyers, we talk in legalese, and people, you know, I try to read the rules, I mean, all lawyers, we read the rules of civil procedure, and we're wondering, or criminal procedures, right? And you're wondering, who wrote these? You have to read it six times to understand what it's saying. And we're lawyers, so we're trying to make it, yeah, so we're trying to make it very, we're trying to make it very, the eligibility requirement's very easy, so the process is easy. And then, like I said, we're trying to work with neighbor works, because they're going to help us with the process. And then, we have to determine what documents somebody's going to have to provide, like proof of insurance and things of that nature. But it is, it is going. And one thing Jerry always says, and you didn't mention it today, is that another important part about reassessment, not only to cure the inequities, but to spur economic development.
It'll do that too, but we don't want to hurt anybody, Joan.
No.
And we will pay attention to that. We have been.
We'll be watching.
It will go right ahead.
But I do think, you say all the time, that companies, it's not a desirable place to come if we haven't reassessed in 54 years.
Actually, if it works right, Joan, property taxes will go down, because there'll be so many more people here, and so much more development in a positive way. Okay.
But multilingual, that's a good idea as well.
All right. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Commissioners, other business. Commissioner Chirmac?
I just want to thank our voter registration for their hard work in putting Lackawanna County ahead of a lot of the other counties, getting things done. We were wrapped up last night kind of early, and they all worked together, bringing in extra help, and we got it done. So, thanks for all that hard work.
Okay, Commissioner Dominic?
I just want to say to Brenda Sacco, who I can't say enough good things about her. I mean, I really, I could sit here and go on for days about how wonderful she is at her job. I went to that event on Saturday, and I really enjoyed it, and it was, it was nice. All the vendors, they seemed very happy to be there, just to be out and selling their merchandise and getting their name out there and their product out there. And I think that, what I was trying to say, I was interviewed a couple times, but, and I haven't seen them, nor do I want to, but what I was trying to say is that this COVID way became our new normal. And like, even when I walk into a store, I'm still like, do I need a mask? Do I not need a mask? I mean, we're trained now with this new normal, and I think this was the beginning of going back to our old new normal, and, you know what I mean? And having people come out and get together, and everybody seemed to be having a good time. The bands were amazing. And I just, the work that you put into it, you did a really good job. It's amazing the things you can do when you put your head to it. It's crazy. So, good job.
Yep, great job, Brenda. And as far as the election goes, it is next to impossible to steal an election. If anyone stood here yesterday and watched it. So, the claim of, you know, not anything being improper in Lackawanna County is totally ridiculous. In most of the country, it's ridiculous. So, the big lie that keeps being promoted, that it was a stolen election, is absolutely ridiculous. And all that does is make people less secure and feel less comfortable with the election. Come here next election and sit here and watch. You'll see it. And on another note, San Yubaldo has their festival coming up real soon, and there were supposed to be some
What is that?
Frank.
So, the festivities essentially begin next week, I believe, on Monday. The actual festival is over Memorial Day weekend, and the Race of the Saints, I believe, is on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. I apologize, I don't have the
Saturday's the 28th.
The 28th.
Birthday double X.
How old are you going to be?
54.
We're going to put, we're going to put Brian up on the platform and carry him around. Absolutely.
It's a, it's a
I was going to say, if anybody's available, we're going to need a few extras, I think.
And it's a great fun event. Everyone that gets the opportunity should go up and visit.
And if I can add, you know, despite whatever your heritage or your ethnicity is, it really is an event, and it's a local event that, to Commissioner Natariani's point, if you've never experienced it, or you've never been a part of it, and not that you have to take an active role, just to go up there, spend an hour or two, and bring your family and your friends, and you see what it's about. It's not only a good time, but it's a pretty neat cultural experience, and you get to learn a lot about the history of not only Gubio and the Italian history, but the history here, the local history in Jessup, and how it's transformed our local community, so.
And you'll eat pretty good, too, then.
You will.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Other question, all in favor?
Aye.